Seven P M again. Thank you very much for being here. This is the zoning meeting scheduled for August first, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, we'll go ahead and go with the roll call, please.
Commissioner Herman.
Uh, yes, here, present.
Be a Zoom, correct, sir?
Correct.
Commissioner McCormick. Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Ben Gotia. Chairman Solis.
Present.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I declare we have a quorum present.
I appreciate it.
Under the rules of the Open Meetings Act, uh, Mr. Herman's presence is permitted by Zoom because there is a quorum in the room and the chairman is in the room.
That is correct. Thank you very much. At this time, want to go ahead and welcome our newest committee, I mean, Commissioner to zoning Ben Gotia. Christian, uh, why don't you give us a little hello, welcome, and tell us a little bit about yourself and welcome to the team?
Thank you. I was appointed by by Joey's brand and I have lived in Castle Hills for seventeen years. I have three kids. I am a realtor and um, I love the city.
Excellent. Looking forward to your perspective. Want to go ahead and thank everybody for returning. I get to be the chairman one more time and welcome to y'all. The opportunity to serve with y'all is such a pleasure, uh, and I'm looking forward to this endeavor. Let's continue. At this point, are there any citizens to be heard? Did anybody sign up to speak?
I don't see anyone and there was no sign up sheet, but there doesn't seem to be anyone standing up asking to be recognized.
Appreciate it, sir. Thank you very much. With nobody else signed up to speak, we'll go straight to the consent agenda. My approved, my hope is that each of you had a chance to review the consent agenda. I mean, excuse me, the consent agenda, which is the approval of the zoning meeting from July fifth. I'll need a motion. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Jackson, uh, Jackson motion, McCormick second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Discussion, see no discussion. All those favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. So we'll go ahead into item number four, which is the new business, four point five. That's a public hearing. It's seven oh three. I'll open up the public hearing for a discussion and possible action to review the city ordinances related to the regulation of massage parlors and similar businesses and to provide recommended changes, if any, to the city council for consideration, including a report from the two-member subcommittee of the zoning commission regarding regulation of massage parlors and similar businesses. I'd like to go ahead and start with the report from our two-member subcommittee, which was Mr. McCormick and Mr. Jackson. Mr. McCormick?
Sorry. I thought I hit it on now. Is that better? Uh, we had an opportunity to meet and to look over the comparable statutes from a number of local cities, including San Antonio, Balcony Heights, Shirts, Chavino Park, and several others. And we also reviewed our existing statute. We have a code section which addresses um, massage parlors. It's in the sexually oriented business section on Article three. But our problem with that is that the definitions that we use are so narrow that no business necessarily would would fall under that particular definition. And there are some problems in that the location restrictions on massage parlors are so broad that there probably is no place in Castle Hills where you can legally put a sexually oriented business or a massage parlor if it falls under that. Problem is, we already have seven massage parlors in Castle Hills, which seems like a lot considering the size of our city. But since we had that problem with our with our code, uh, they were able to slip in and open businesses. We've had a couple of complaints from property owners, uh, because they've received complaints from their tenants about looking out and seeing a massage parlor or a, and a liquor store close together and right in front of the door where the clients see them when they go out. And they felt that that was a problem. They think they may lose some tenants because of it. So there there are those issues and the fact that none, that our regulation does not appear to cover massage parlors very, very well. I've talked to Mr. Schnall and talked to Mr. Jackson at some length about about the possible problems and we'll discuss those when we get into the discussion of the uh, of the possible, possible regulation that we use. Mr. Jackson, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
You have our notes that that we, uh, discussed, and I think that we might bring those to the attention of a, of a group, uh, so that we can consider those.
Uh, Mr. Solis, if you'll announce the date and time, you're opening the public hearing. And then just, uh, ask if anyone present wishes to speak during the public hearing.
I'll go back. I'll go back to that. I just want to make sure the meeting was closed. We're going to go into the discussion per council, uh, for the commissioners and, um, in reference to your two-member subcommittee. So you met, did you meet with any businesses?
No, we did not.
Do you, and do?
Didn't look around. Took a drive to the city and look at the exteriors of the buildings that, and I don't know that I found all seven of them, but I felt there were seven in town. I was able to find four or five that I looked at. And I didn't find a real problem with the exteriors. It appears that most of them that have glass front buildings have blacked out, painted windows.
Do you, um, do you, I mean, one of the things that we do have a small business alliance here in Castle Hills of some sort, right? Have they taken a position on this at all? Have they been giving you any input as to what they perceive should be done?
Say for certain that they were notified, uh, when a membership of the business association notified. Mr. McRim, do you know?
I, I have mentioned it to Mr. Joyce, who's one of representatives to the business association, but I'm not aware that this is.
I think it would be smart for us to be able to solicit their input in the next meeting, um, for us to be able to have that. I think it's important for us to understand from the business community themselves, since it is something that is business related. I want to start a process where we're closing more people's voices to make these decisions, which are long lasting for the city of Castle Hills. So I think from my perspective, the more we have people coming and expressing where they stood or what they believe should be done, I think is for our greater good and helpful to our decision making.
I think it would be very interesting for a lot of them to read what is already there.
If you could speak more into the mic.
I think it would be very interesting if these people would actually read more of what is already in the code.
Overall, understood.
Yeah.
Do you know how many, where, are they called massage parlors? Is that the name that they're given?
No, the, the buildings that I've seen just have a sign out front that says massage.
Could everyone please remember to use your microphone? The city manager in absentia has sent me a text to that effect. Um, and the answer to the, to the question, Mr. McCormick touched on this, um, in his comments earlier. In our ordinance as it stands today, the definition of massage parlor is worded in such a way that we don't have any massage parlors.
Oh, that's right.
Okay. And, and that is something that I think that the commission can, um, consider a cure of by creating a definition of a massage establishment or a massage spa, uh, slightly different wording. And then we would have a definition that would fit the kinds of massage businesses that we know are operating in the city. And in that process, we can also, uh, the commission can also consider requiring a massage business, not a massage parlor, but a massage business as newly defined, um, to get a special use permit. Um, and we can impose hours of operation. We can impose distance requirements for those businesses. If that's the will of the commission in terms of a recommendation, then ultimately the city council. But that's, that's why Mr. McCormick is exactly right, that as defined in our ordinance, we don't have any massage parlors because of the wording of that definition. Um, and any, any business that did meet the definition of a massage parlor in our current ordinance would by virtue of that be a sexually oriented business and be subject to certain additional requirements, including, uh, not being located within a thousand feet of any property that's zoned A, double A, or triple A. Um, maybe also B, I'd have to look. Um, can't be within a thousand feet of another similar business, um, things of that nature. And to, to correct Mr. McCormick respectfully, there is one small area in the city of Castle Hills which meets the criteria for the, uh, location of a sexually oriented business. There has to be, under the constitution, such a location within the city. And that location is near the intersection of West Avenue and Loop four ten.
So let me ask you a question. So officially, right now, an establishment that provides massages is, is termed, what type of business within our codes?
There is, there, for a, a traditional massage business, which does, um, uh, hands-on therapy for a, a customer or a patient, is not something to find in our ordinance if that recipient of the service is wearing clothing over certain specified areas of their body. That's why we don't have any businesses that have told us that they are a massage parlor.
So the designation of the, of the businesses that presently are of some concern, right, that we're looking at? Right now, what, what, they're just a regular business?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that's something that, that, I mean, I want to make sure the public understand what we're talking about. So right now, it's a generic C of O with the business, and there's no definition as to what they do inside. They could be a liquor, they could do whatever. I mean, it's a regular business. And, and in this way, what we want to be able to do is to delineate and have a specific addressment of those that consider themselves and meet the criteria that we could define as a massage parlor. That's what we're going to end up looking at doing?
I think, Mr. Chairman, we would not touch the definition of massage parlor. What other cities have done, and it's Mr. McCormick and Mr. Jackson may remember, in, in San Antonio's ordinance and in the ordinances from Dallas and Houston, these kinds of businesses are defined as a massage establishments.
Okay.
And, um, are, are regulated, but are not by definition sexually oriented businesses.
And just once again, for the clarification, when you pass a new ordinance, those that are presently operating with that will be grandfathered?
Their existence will be grandfathered. However, if the ordinance were, for example, to say the hours of operation are eight A M. to ten P M., we could enforce that kind of a regulation against that business. We could also en- enforce a requirement that licenses be posted. Two examples of things that, um, I mentioned at our meeting of the commission in, uh, in July, um, as possible, um, regulatory ma- things the city could adopt for a massage establishment.
Commissioner Herden, we have not heard from you. Do you have any comments?
You said Herman or her nan? That was the previous, um, commissioner.
Yes, he's gone.
I think that it would, okay, so I, I am, I do have a couple of different concerns. It's, you know, I think, are these self-proclaimed sexually oriented businesses operating massage establishments? Or is that a, is that a moniker that we're applying to these businesses?
The definition of a massage parlor in our current ordinance is such that if, if one were to be a massage parlor, then it would automatically be a sexually oriented, oriented business. The reason for that is, this is the definition, Mr. Herman. Massage parlor means any place where, for any form of consideration or gratuity, massage, alcohol, rub, administration of fermentation, electric or magnetic treatments, or any other treatment or manipulation of the human body, which occurs as a part of or in connection with such treatment, manipulation, or service related thereto exposes specified anatomical areas. There is later a definition of what is a specified anatomical area. And it's, it's the fact that our ordinance says a massage parlor is only a business that does this form of manipulation or rubbing, et cetera, um, in a, in a, uh, with a practice of exposing these certain anatomical areas is what, what causes the massage parlor, um, by definition, to not include the massage parlors along Northwest Military, for example, which have represented to the city that they do not do that kind of activity. They do not do, uh, provide their services in a way that it exposes the specified anatomical areas. Therefore, we don't have any way to otherwise regulate a massage establishment, unless the commission makes a recommendation to city council and the city council adopts that recommendation where, and thereby we can get some control over these businesses. There are two of them located very close to each other. I don't know that's one a thousand feet. I obviously didn't measure it, but, um, on Northwest Military, um, between West Avenue, um, and where, um, Northwest Military intersects with Lock Hill Selma. And there are also two, again, maybe within a thousand feet, one at the corner of Northwest Military and, um, West Avenue, and then moving toward four ten, um, another massage business, the most recent one that opened, um, is located next to the Southern Wine and Liquor Store, um, pretty much at the intersection of, um, Zornia and Northwest Military. Again, that may be more than a thousand feet, but that, that gives you an idea of the proximity of, of four businesses in, in a, in a relatively compact area along Northwest Military Highway.
Hmm. Okay. Well, I just think whatever the commission decides to pursue, I think it's important that, you know, massage can definitely be therapeutic, you know, and legitimate businesses that are not designating themselves as sexually oriented in nature. Now, I think there needs to be some discussion on what, um, practical matter, um, measures we can take to ensure that legitimate, you know, therapeutic establishments, uh, not be singled out or, or I guess included in this, uh, any ruling or any kind of recommendation we would make to council regarding this stuff.
Because we also do have in that same area, the physical therapy.
Exactly.
Right? And so how are they defined in reference to this? Because in physical therapy, the manipulation of the human body does take place, and there are hands on the body in physical therapy. So how are we making that delineation?
Physical therapy is not defined in our, uh, ordinance. Therefore, the, basically, the, um, the legal position would be that the definition, typical dictionary definition of a physical therapy business would be applicable. I read earlier, and I'm not going to reread it. I don't think it's necessary, the, the, the definition of massage parlor, um, it, um, it, it clearly, I think, would include, um, ordinarily, um, physical therapy. But the rest of that definition, the part I did not read, uh, is this, the definition of a massage parlor shall not include the practice of massage by a licensed hospital, nor by a licensed massage therapist, licensed physical therapist, or licensed occupational therapist, hospital, licensed physician, surgeons, chiropractor, osteopath, nurse, technician working under the supervision of those individuals, nor by trainers of any amateur, semi-professional, professional athlete, or athletic team or school athletic program. So our definition of massage parlor excludes physical therapists. It includes anyone who's licensed, um, in one of those healing professions. But they are not separately defined in our ordinance.
It's a, it's a catch-all with an exclusion.
Correct.
For them. I see. I mean, yeah, I mean, because when you read it, it's a catch-all of everybody, but then the second half of it is the definition of who shall be excluded from inclusion in the, in the catch-all. Um, Mr. McCormick, Mr. Jackson, since you guys have been spending some time on this, what is your recommendation to us?
Uh, generally, I think we should rewrite a section of the code applicable to, uh, massage service or facilities. And include restrictions of operating hours, say, eight to ten during the day. I think we might require that, uh, all persons, uh, serving as masseurs or masseuses, uh, should have a state license, a state, there is a state license for massage therapists. I think we could, uh, we could require that as a, as a, uh, requirement for, for getting a special, uh, use permit. I think that, that we might want to restrict the possession or sale of alcohol in these, these facilities. Obviously, the problem that, that we have is that some of these facilities are, in fact, sexually oriented businesses and, and, uh,
But that's a big assumption.
That's, that's, that's a big assumption. So I would not be inclined to put them in there.
I want us to stay straight on what we're talking about. I would suggest that you maybe make, make a motion that, um, with the city attorney, the little subcommittee continue, work and bring us back something that we can look with and work off of. Uh, and then we'll go from there. So I will accept the motion if you want to make that.
I would like to include the issue of, of spas as well.
Whatever you bring back, you can bring back to us.
I think, I think we, we might want to include spas. I think they have, uh, a certain very specific problems. I think we might want to, to, to include inspections by our compliance officer or the city health officer.
Again, your, your subcommittee has that, that ability to sit. We're just going to make sure, uh, that we are legally within the right parameters. Yes, sir.
And, um, a move that we.
Oh, we got a, we have another question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When you say spas, do you mean, um, you know, skincare, um, you know, what I see as a spa is a skincare, nail care, um, self-care kind of place? So are you, and they have all of their licenses and they get inspected regularly and have to post all of those upfront?
Well, I'm thinking of spas that might include, say, uh, uh, hot tub, sauna, steam room kind of activities. Um, I think that, that they have, there are these day spa type locations where you can go and climb in a hot tub or sit in a sauna or that sort of thing. And I think.
That would include L A Fitness.
Sir?
That will include L A Fitness and a sauna and.
Well, L A Fitness is not in Castle Hills.
I understand, but that's an example. But again, I think you got the gist, you have the direction. Please sit with the city attorney, the three of y'all, come back with a recommendation for upgrading where we are today to be able to, to have something in the books that's able to address the need that is identified. Also ask that you solicit the, the, the information or the thoughts of the business coalition that we have in Castle Hills. I think that's essential. Um, and then, um, let's have that other public hearing. Once you bring it.
Another public hearing at that time. I think that's a good idea.
Yes, sir.
What about our police chief?
That's fine. Please do, because if you have any. Any crime issues or anything like that, that they may have, have, then please consider that also.
Okay, then I'll, may I go ahead with his motion then? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a question for Mr. Shaw. Is it appropriate for you and me and Mr. McCormick to meet to discuss this?
Yes, sir, that would be fine.
Okay.
Motion, please.
I'll move that, uh, we continue our subcommittee, uh, Mr. Jackson and I, and, and we meet with Mr. Schnall to bring back a recommended resolution to the, to the commission, uh, concerning massage service facilities and spas, uh, in the broad term that Mr. Schnall and, uh, Mr. Jackson and I have talked about in, in the past. And we're talking about spa facilities that include showers, baths.
That's, the motion is there. So do I get a second?
Second.
Sure. Have a second over here. So then the motion was made by McCormick, second by Ben Gotia, I'm getting it. Uh, is there any other discussion, discussion? See no discussion. All those favor, say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. It is done. Thank you very much. Um, let's move on to the second public hearing, which is four point two. Discussion and possible action on recommendation to city council on amendment to the zoning code that sets out additional requirements for shared group housing for disabled persons. It is seven twenty-seven. I open up the public hearing, August first of two thousand and twenty-two. At this time, does anybody out there in Zoom world or in audience would like to comment in reference to this public hearing? And this topic? Going once, going twice, see no pub, no public information. I closed the public hearing at seven twenty-eight on the first of August of two thousand and twenty-two. At this point, we'll go straight to a discussion. And that is, um, you know, Mark, did you bring the additional resolutions for the commissioners here to read?
I've passed out copies of the proposed resolution to each of the, uh, commission members present. Um, I did not know Mr. Herman would not be here. Uh, there's one sitting on the dais, but, um, what I will, will say in explanation is that, um, uh, first background, um, the city has at least one shared group housing for disabled persons, um, that, uh, has been in existence for a while. That, uh, business has been the subject of, uh, some, uh, television media reports, um, about, um, enforcement matters. And, um, the, uh, the mayor has asked, uh, that the commission look at, uh, whether we could add some requirements to get, uh, better control over the activities at those facilities. The city council at its meeting in July passed amendments to the city's nuisance ordinance to address a few things, um, in part related to, um, these kinds of businesses. Under state law, the, the chapter one twenty-three of the state human resources code, shared group housing for disabled persons, um, is permitted by state law in any residential district. There are a, a number of, um, requirements in the state ordinance, uh, excuse me, in the state law, which are, have been incorporated into our city ordinance in relation to shared group housing. Those kinds of requirements include maximum number of disabled persons is six with two supervisory or personal care providers. The group home must provide, um, food and shelter, personal guidance, care, habitation services, and supervision. They may not have on the premises, um, or on the public rights of way adjacent to the residence more than one motor vehicle per bedroom for the use of residents. Uh, they must meet all applicable licensing requirements. They may not be established within a radius of one-half mile of a previously existing group home for disabled persons. Um, and there are, are a few size requirements for the bedrooms in the unit. What's before you as a proposed recommendation to the city council are some additional requirements, um, to provide the city with an opportunity to help make sure that the, um, facility is offering the proper services with qualified caretakers, um, to disabled residents. And that is what I passed out as potential resolution number two zero two-two dash zero eight zero dash zero one, which, uh, would add a new section fifty dash four fifty-six to the zoning ordinance and has five new requirements. to the zoning ordinance and has five new requirements that might be imposed by the, uh, on the recommendation of zoning commission and then by action of the city council, to provide a little better regulation, uh, of these homes. So that, that is the background and what's in front of you this evening. The five new requirements, uh, and I'm just doing this for Mr. Herman's benefit because he doesn't have a copy of it. The first is that by January thirty-first of each year, the owner will provide written evidence to the city, um, as to exactly what section of chapter one twenty-three of the human resources code. The operator is licensed and provide evidence of the current and valid state licenses for the operator. Uh, the second requirement is that there be a uh, fire inspection of the shared group home every year by January thirty-first. The third requirement is about the size of any exterior signage, such that it, it, it be a nameplate not exceeding one square foot in area. The next requirement is that the, there are no construction, no exterior construction features are permitted, which would place the structure out of character with the surrounding residential neighborhood. And finally, that the group home must at all times be in compliance with our fire code and property maintenance codes. Several of these requirements, um, are comparable to what ha- have been adopted in the city of San Antonio and other communities. In a way, again, to further regulate, um, and provide protection both to the residents of these shared group homes and to the residents of the neighboring community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is an example of what we can see hopefully in, in next month in reference to the, uh, item we just approved for reconsideration. This is a concise rehashing of what needs to be done. It's down to some simple points uh, for your consideration. Is there any discussion from the committee? I do, uh, Mark, actually on the topic, on the, um, copy given to us, uh, there's a typo. It should see group C says the group home must at times be compliant. You're missing the word all because you articulated all and I knew it would be all, but it's not in the, in the item that is before us for consideration. Do you see that? E? Yes, sir.
Yes.
Please at all. You're welcome. I knew that was a important part to this thing. Gentlemen and lady, you're, um, are they, it's open for discussion.
I have a question. Mr. Schnall, when it talks about on your D, no exterior construction. One of the questions that I have is how much can be done exterior to allow for access by wheelchairs, et cetera, ramps and so on? And I, I just don't know.
Well, this is, I think anything that would be ADA, Americans with disabilities compliant would not be considered, um, anything which we would want to prohibit. Uh, I think this is going to be a, it, it's sort of is a, the, the code enforcement officer knows it when he sees it type of a situation. Um, but I think, uh, ramps or anything related to access by someone who is disabled um, would not be a construction feature, um, that would be considered um, out of character with the neighboring residential area. Because a private residence could have that. There are several private residents in our city which have ramps in order to accommodate wheelchairs.
What about regulation of the kitchen?
Mr. McCormick, thank you. Uh, and as, so the commission knows, Mr. McCormick did mention that concept to me. When this issue was, you know, first under discussion. Um, I looked at the city's food service regulations and they only apply to retail operations. So I don't think we can impose a, um, inspection, um, of that nature on any kind of a food inspection. We could look at, in addition to saying there'd be an annual fire inspection, we could also, um, include a health inspection. If that was the will of the commission. But I did not feel we could, we could require a license because our, our food service regulation specifically only applies to retail food operations.
I think that some sort of inspection of the, of the food service operation is appropriate. I don't know how often or who does it, but, uh, I think that we should at some point take a look at the kitchen on a regular basis.
Anything else?
I'm curious.
We're not going to get consensus on that yet. I want to have an open discussion before we start reaching conclusions.
On a retail food operation, Mr. Schnall, what is the inspection requirement on that?
I do have some comments for the, uh.
Yes, sir.
Committee whenever. I don't want to interrupt Mr. Schnall's work.
Why don't? Yeah, go ahead while we're, while he's looking.
Have Mr. Herman go ahead. I know I have a copy of that here, but I just haven't laid my fingers on that page.
Mr. Herman, your thought?
No, I had taken some time to read, you know, there wasn't a couple of different reports on the, uh, location at Antler Drive. And I think, you know, the, the main thing that I took away from that was, and I, I'd like to see if we could possibly focus on it a little more is really, you know, the care of these individuals that are being placed under the, the owners of these establishments. You know, I think, um, anything that we could do from a city's perspective to ensure that these people are being properly cared for is of the utmost, uh, concern to me, you know, I, I think. I don't know what our legal capabilities are, but I'd love to see it if we had some kind of a, a routine kind of, you know, how they have welfare checkups for elderly people, you know, just have a routine checkup to make sure that these people are being cared for. I think the kitchen recommendation by Mr. McCormick is a good one for sure. Just making sure that it's meeting all of the appropriate, you know, safety inspections and things, but um, I don't know if, if each member of the commission has taken the time to read the report that I'm referencing about the Antler Drive location, but it was, um, it was troubling to say the least, you know, and I'd like to, uh, I did take some time to speak with Mr. Zamarin about it and, um, I think his input would be very insightful and making, um, you know, recommendations to the city council regarding this, uh, this type of business in our city.
I'd like to, uh, appreciate it. Anything else?
Not from, no.
Thank you. I, I want to remember, I want to remind my colleagues here of our role. We're about zoning. We need to stay within our lane. You're leaving our lane when we start talking about the welfare, when you start talking about kitchen inspections. The state of Texas licenses these organizations. That is their lane. We handle zoning. Perhaps code compliance can look at this, that's not zoning. There's other issues that come up. We need to remember we're the zoning commission. And while this is an issue, there are some things that are proposed right here that we can look at. Because I'd be interested in what exactly a fire chief's inspection is all about. We know, or anybody should know, that it is a routine matter for the fire chief and the fire department to do routine fire checkups on every single business here. It happens today. They go through, they make sure, because they also create a plan for anything that may happen within that facility. They know exactly how to walk in. They know where the doors are. They know where the ins and outs are. They do that today. For the reason of fire safety. So don't, let's, let's, I, I am cautioning this board to not look at blurring the lines beyond what we are capable of doing. Our mission is about continuity within a community. Our mission is zoning. So please be cautious when talking about how we're going to do this. This is a case within the city of Castle Hills. Is it prevalent? I hope not. I don't think we've seen it. But I just want to remind the commission, this commission is about zoning. And so when we start looking beyond our area, we, we, we tend to move into an area that is gray when it should be black and white. So cautious is what I'm saying. As we go through this process, the city attorney has brought to us five items for us to consider right now that he believes are legal within our purview and within the charge of this body that we are part of. It does not go beyond the charge that we have. So I, I, again, I just want to make sure that we stay within our, our lane. There are others involved. There is the county involved and their responsibility. There's the city, I mean, excuse me, the, the state to me is the main reason and the ones that should be monitoring the operation, should be monitoring their safety, should be monitoring everything that you guys are talking about. That's not our role as a zoning. Mr. Schnall?
Okay, and, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think you've, uh, expressed it well. The, in terms of the, uh, limits or the, the parameters within which the zoning commission operates, the zoning commission's goal is to provide regulations about land use. The, uh, the human resources code, uh, section one twenty-three point zero one zero provides that the Department of Aging and Disability Services, which is a state agency, shall make every reasonable effort to ensure the safety of residents of a community home operated by or under the regulatory jurisdiction of the department and the residents of a neighborhood that is affected by the location of the community home. So as, as Chairman Solis said, um, in terms of the care of the residents, um, the, uh, State Department of Aging and Disability Services, it goes by the acronym DADS, um, is the appropriate, um, agency to deal with that. However, um, I'm certain that our police department, um, or our fire chief, or our health inspector, um, could be alert to uh, seeing what is going on during routine drive-bys by the police department and during an annual inspection by the fire chief and perhaps also by our, our chief health officer. Um, I do think that's a reasonable annual requirement that there be a, a basic health inspection. Mr. Jackson, unfortunately, our ordinance about food service establishments is not as clear as I would like it to be. It does require an annual license fee, um, and requires that the license it be signed off on by the chief health inspector, but it doesn't specifically say what the chief health inspector is inspecting. There may be state law that does cover that. At a city council meeting in another city last week, um, that city council renewed its contract with the health inspection service that inspects the forty-plus retail or public food suppliers in that, in that city. And I suspect that Castle Hills may have a comparable arrangement, um, with an outside contractor who does these health inspections. But I do think it would, it, it's just as it's reasonable for there to be an annual fire inspection. It, it seems to me it might very well be reasonable to have an annual health inspection as suggested by Commissioner McCormick.
That could be an addendum. I will, and, and again, I don't want to beat the dead horse, but it is important that we stay in our lane. The ones, the ones that have the parameters to be able to go beyond their lanes is the city council. It's not us. We're not a city council. We are zoning commission that looks at land use. So let's stay in our lane. Let's move this forward with the amendment. And let's let city council do what is the follow-up upon our work. So. For the next meeting, since this was not made available for in the agenda for this meeting. So I have, let me, let me recap it for you. So there's a motion to move this forward with an addendum that will say we want to include also a health inspection. And that be brought forth for the next, you know, next meeting with us for our public hearing for full consideration. Thank you, sir. I'll need a second. Need a motion in a second. We have a motion in a second. Are there any other discussions? Yes, sir.
Who made the second? I didn't.
The second was Jackson.
Thank you.
So are there, is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. City council has nothing, I mean, something, no, we said one public hearing. Now, when is that public hearing? That's the next item. Let's go. Four point three, discussion and possible, and changing the Tuesday, September sixth meeting zoning commission to meet Tuesday, August the thirtieth.
So moved.
We have a motion. I'll need a second. Second by Ms. Bengo Chia. And so we have a motion in a second. Any discussion, discussion, discussion? No, seeing no discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. I have one other item that I want to bring up that's not on this agenda, but that is, um, I, I had a discussion with Mark earlier. I'd like to be able to see our meetings move to six o'clock. Seven o'clock is a little late and quite frankly, uh, you look at the agendas of all the other meetings, councils at six thirty. Um, there's one at five thirty. There's other at, at six o'clock. We are the, we and I think the architectural review are part of adjustment. Who's at seven with us?
I think the architectural review committee is at seven.
Yeah, because I've been on both those committees. We were always at seven.
Yes.
Uh, but I just want you all to think about it. We'll put it on the agenda for the future. Uh, there is nothing in our code or rules that say we have to meet at seven PM. But council commuted six thirty, then, and, and others at six, then perhaps we should look at that.
And there can be no discussion tonight.
Correct.
It's not on the agenda.
Right. So I'm just.
Chairman has exercised his chairman's privilege to put it, um, out there. Um, we will put it on the agenda for the August thirty meeting. And, and y'all be able to, to discuss it and decide what time you want your future meetings to be.
That is correct. And I'm also looking at the possibility because of transparency and I think uh, we deserve it. I mean, the, the citizens of Castle Hills deserve the opportunity. And we also have a Saturday morning meeting also. We have some opportunities there. Yep. Right now parks and, and the parks, we meet at seven AM, I mean, at nine AM, right? Or ten?
Ten AM on Saturdays when they have a meeting. Again, no discussion tonight.
No discussion. I was just bringing it up so that you guys know what I'm thinking. No, ten. Give me time for breakfast and then come in. I'll need a motion to adjourn. Ms. Bengo Chia.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion. Second by Mr. McCormick. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Seven forty-nine PM.